We're just getting kicked off here. So I'm starting the opening, the select board meeting of November 17th, 2022. At 6:32 PM and I'd like to ask the town administrator to read just the executive session.
Good evening. So tonight's executive session is pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A, six and seven. To consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property where the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position. Of the select board and to obtain legal advice pursuant to separate construction versus DKM 449 Mass. 444 parentheses, 2007, the lease of the Sherburne Community Center. You'll need a second and a roll call vote.
Okay, so I do so declare that we need an executive session to discuss the lease to the community center. So I'd like to get a second. I moved that we go to executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I'll do a roll call vote. Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So we're in executive session now. Sorry, I quit. My bad.
We have our big fall fundraising event this coming Saturday. It's called a Friendsgiving. A Friendsgiving hasn't happened in about four years. It will be taking place at the Holliston Barn, Holliston Historical Society Barn. And we have about 10 tickets to sell remaining. The tickets will include dinner and drinks. Dessert and five tickets for door prizes. We have quite a select, good selection of raffle prizes. Many of them which have been donated by our local businesses. So and I think most of you on this phone call know, but the friends. Do help the library to cover a lot of the costs of their programming, new books, museum passes. And we also put on the summer concert series and the arts and craft fair. I think most of you here know all that, but just wanted to let you know, just in case. If you are interested in buying tickets or know someone who is interested in buying tickets, please visit our website. It's a Sherburne Library Friends.com. And tickets are $85 a person. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene, for running it. Should be a good fundraiser and PR also, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do I have a motion relative to the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am I as well. So I want to also announce, as I forwarded around to the select board members, that we received another open meeting law complaint. From Rick Thompson regarding the hearings and I'd like to receive a motion. The response will be developed as usual by town council.
I'll move.
No second?
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am I as well. Thank you. And now the next item up is the community center. Foundation lease, which is up for renewal and we're, as some people on the call may know, we're negotiating a 20-year lease with the Community Center Foundation. And I see Doug Furbush has just joined the meeting. I just let him in the room. I think he's joining. Do you want to sort of lead it off Heather? Or do you prefer that I do?
I can do that if you'd prefer, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So Doug Furbush and is anyone else from the foundation here this evening?
I don't know. Doug was just connecting to audio too when I looked.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Great. So for anyone who doesn't know, the town has been in the process of negotiating a new 20-year lease with the Community Center Foundation. For the Community Center Building and I understand the parties are nearly in agreement as to all terms. We do have one final. Item to resolve the language on and that relates to the foundation's financial reporting and whether and how that will be provided to the town. So the town's request would be that the foundation provide on an annual basis, a copy of whatever standard financial report. It either reviews with management or files with the state that would be a complete accounting of operating expenses. Assets and revenues. So if there is such a document that is already prepared on an annual basis. We would be willing to change the wording of the current proposed lease. To reflect the title of whatever that document is, as long as it could just automatically be provided to the town on an annual basis.
So that should not be a problem with us. We have internal financial statements that are created.
Is this Doug talking? I just want to.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry Doug.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So the answer is yes, we can supply that. We have, we do monthly financial statements which are then. Created into an annual financial statement at the end of the year and we also do a filing with the state once a year as well. So we could provide either or or both.
I would vote for both and if we're not, you know, using it, we can notify you, but I think it's good, good, particularly because, you know. Part of the basis is that, you know, you're covering a lot of the costs. So it's good to be aware of, you know. The situation with the capital costs and all the challenges that you're facing too. So I mean, we view you as part of the town, even though it's a separate 501(c)(3). So we're not, you know, trying to spy on you. We're just trying to jointly address concerns or. Work together to make things better.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. We have no problem issuing those. We excluded it from the draft of the agreement because we didn't think it was necessary.
Okay. Well, I think a consensus of the select board is we would like to see that information. So we would like to modify the language. We could do that offline and just vote. Heather, do you think just vote to approve the contract with that change and subject to the language of the title of the report? Or do you want to share the screen of what you drafted?
I think what you suggested, the former would be fine, just an approval subject to that change. And if, if the foundation could just provide us with the title of their internal documents, so we can refer to that specific title. So there's no confusion that the town isn't looking for anything above and beyond what, what they're already preparing. And then that's the document the town will be looking for annually. That would be great. And then I would also suggest including in the motion authorizing the interim town administrator to sign the lease on behalf of the town.
Okay.
So I made that motion.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'll make the motion as said by Heather to. To enter into a lease with the Sherburne Community Center Foundation in the form that. Has been discussed and it's before us tonight with the modification. As outlined by council and to authorize the acting town administrator to sign the lease on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, great. Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am I as well. Thank you Doug and I'm not sure if you have other board members here, but.
Frank Cook is on the call as well. He's been a long-term board member.
Yeah, no, I know Frank. So thanks to your whole team and we're looking forward to working together. So I'm glad we have an agreement in place and we can move forward.
To a successful another 20 years together.
Exactly, exactly. So thanks again.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. And so the next time, yeah, thank you. Thank you Heather. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is UMass Community Center assessment findings and I know that the consultants are here. I'm not sure who they are, but.
They, they are.
They need to share their screen. Is that Sue, are you one of them?
I am and I would like to be able to share my screen.
Okay, just.
You're good.
Me?
Yeah, you can.
I just wanted to, I don't know if I'm muted or not.
Yes, Sue, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, before they get started, the COA would like to thank the town for providing the funding for the. Assessment and to those who participated in the one-on-one and those who. Completed the survey. We're very excited to see the results and I would like to introduce, personally introduce the two leads, Dr. Berger and Dr. Coyle. They're from the Gerontology Institute at UMass Boston's McCormick School. And the school provides resources and research expertise to communities, non-government organizations and other agencies throughout the Commonwealth. And I've been working with them for almost a year and they've done a great job and they've spent a lot of time and got to know Sherburne and the residents. And I just wanted to thank them personally as well for taking this project on. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Berger who's going to present.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. I'm gonna share my screen. Let's just make sure that this is gonna be fine. And I'm hoping everyone can see that, correct? I see some head shakes. Great.
Perfect.
Thanks very much for allowing Caitlin and myself the time to share with you tonight, really just a snapshot of the findings from the assessment that we completed. To support your community and determining what's needed to make Sherburne a place where people can age in community. I'll be speaking for a bit and we'll have some time for questions afterwards. I think that's probably the best way to go, so. And. May one second. Okay, there we go. So the purpose of the final report, which will be available online possibly tomorrow. Is really threefold. It's to increase the awareness of the demographic changes in Sherburne, to inform the town of Sherburne and organizations that work with. And on behalf of older residents of the town about the strengths and challenges of aging in Sherburne. And finally, to present recommendations to support the town in responding to these changing demographics and the community concerns. And for those of you who already have read the executive summary, I just want to make sure. Clarify something in it. In the, we tweaked it since you may have seen it. To make sure that we're using the phrase Sherburne Council on Aging and Council on Aging Activities and Services or Programs and Services. As opposed to, we realize you don't have a senior center building and sometimes we use the word senior center and it might have been confusing. We do use the word senior center when we're talking about potential future building or other communities, but I apologize. If there was any confusion with that. So tonight I really want to focus on the findings and the recommendations, but let me, in the report are details of what we did, but let me really briefly share the process. We first developed a demographic profile using US Census data, demographic profile of Sherburne. We completed six interviews with nine town leaders. Some of those interviews had one or more than one person. That's why there were only six interviews and nine leaders. Some of you were here, I see. We sent out our survey to all residents 55 and older. I believe that was 1510 surveys. We got back 540 surveys, which is a 36% response rate, which is really a good response rate for this. And we reviewed some of the town documents, the annual report, some of the COA documents. We then. Looked at all the material together and we identified strengths and assets. We looked at gaps and features and resources that support aging populations. And we tried to identify ways to improve the livability of the aging residents in Sherburne. So these are the key findings and I'm going to talk briefly about each one, but just to give you a preview. Clearly, there's going to be a demand for COA programs and services and that's expected to increase. There was mixed feedback regarding space for the Sherburne COA. Economic insecurity is a concern for some older Sherburne residents. Social isolation is a key issue facing Sherburne older residents. Many Sherburne residents are caregivers and they find it challenging. Home modifications, home repairs and home options are perceived as challenging in Sherburne. Transportation's a concern for Sherburne residents as they age. And communication among departments and with residents could be improved. So let me tell you a little bit about each of those. We'll talk first about the increased demand. According to projections, there's a trend, let me make sure I have my laser here. There's a trend towards an older population in the future. These projections are from the Donahue Institute at the University of Massachusetts. And they suggest that by 2035, nearly 32% of Sherburne population will be 60 and older. So the blue is under 60, but the, on my screen, it's maroonish, brownish-red is 60 to 79 and the yellow is 80 and older. And so as you can see, there's been a larger share of the older population. In 1990, it was about 13%. 2020, it was 23% and it's projected in 2035 to be 32%. So nearly 32%, you know, currently it's a little under a quarter of the population and it's going to increase or projected to increase. To under, just under a third of the population. So the bottom line is Sherburne has a large share of older adults and that's expected to increase. The time is really right to address this demographic shift. So as I meant it, oops, excuse me, as I mentioned, those progressions, the projections show increasing numbers. Therefore, more older adults expect an increase in demand for COA services. But also, one of the reasons, and I'll talk more about why people currently aren't using the COA programs and services. But one of the reasons is they don't have time. For example, one of the comments, insert, someone shared was. I work mornings five times a week and most programs are run in the morning, so I can participate in a number of them unfortunately. And the majority of the survey residents who, survey respondents who were 50 and 60 years old are still working. 80% of those individuals stated they expect to retire within the next five years. They're going to have more time. They're gonna want. And they need to use COA services and programs. So there was mixed feedback regarding the space at the COA. Interviews and survey comments clearly indicate that currently there isn't enough space for dynamic programming and informal socialization for Sherburne seniors. And no space for confidential counseling. Now, I should preface this, that the survey was sent out in April and my interviews, I believe, were in March of this year. And I know that the COA space, I believe, over the summer has shifted from one place to another. So keep that in mind as I share these, this data. But at the time, people felt like there just isn't space to do the things we want to do. But they were very much divided about which senior center scenario they would support. So I share the question on the survey was. Considering the future of senior activities and services, which of the following scenarios would you be most likely to support? And so 30, almost 30% would support a standalone senior center building. But 23% would support dedicated, and they could only choose one option here. Would support dedicated space within one building for most senior programs and services, for example, within the library, within a community center. And then these last two options are similar except for one piece. So I grouped them as 35% would support dedicated administrative and outreach space for senior services. One of these choices adds on an additional space for informal gathering and the other one doesn't have it. But they want dedicated administrative and outreach space with programs provided in spaces throughout the community, which is essentially what you have right now. So it was pretty divided. 13% noted other and they added comments. And some of those comments can be grouped, the comments could be grouped into really three categories. Cost. No need, no opinion and no need for additional building. And I'll share a few of the comments under each. I will say that Sherburne residents are verbose. They like to share their thoughts, which was great. We manually took all of that and put it into a spreadsheet. I am sharing a very small snapshot of the quotes and the report has more, but again, not even all. Cost, town can't afford to support another building. I do not support senior center, just another increase in tax rates that force over 55 out of town. Some people just said they, there was no need, the home bounds, so it doesn't matter to me, or I don't use the senior, the council on aging, things like that. And then, I'm not sure, I guess I would have to see cost benefit analysis and several, many people wrote no opinion. Then this last category was no need for another building, no space needed, use the community center and save money. There are already sufficient spaces in town that can be used, for example, a new overpriced library. And although we grouped these into three themes, as you can see, the no need for additional building could kind of be grouped with cost. Because most, not all, but most of those comments related to tax increase and the money. So then we looked at the frequency that people are using COA programs and services. And 88% of survey respondents use the COA only a few times a year or never. Now that number. Was higher for the younger cohorts, but still, if you look at this, for those under 80, at least 90% of the respondents or more. Never or just a few times a year use the COA. And only 55% of those, 88, and this should be actually 88 plus because we had a few respondents in the 90s. So we asked reasons why they've never used the COA, right? And I, this chart's got a lot of numbers, but I highlighted a few because some were variable via age. So 40% of those 80 and older noted that they're not interested in the programs offered. I would have thought that might have been, I was surprised to see that might have been the younger age groups. We also looked at what types of programming people wanted per age group. And that didn't, and I don't show that in these slides, that's in the report, but that didn't vary that much by age. All age groups, the top priorities were fitness activities. Educational activities, performance and socialization. So. For those things, 40%, I just think it's very, it's a high number of 80 and older, aren't interested in the programs offered. 15% of people, all ages, don't know what's offered. Clearly, that's higher in the younger cohort who aren't using it. We talked a little bit about don't have time. I always think it's interesting when people say, I'm not old enough. Especially when an 80 and older group say they're not old enough for the council on aging. But even the 60 and older, I think people think it talks to the image of the council on aging and people think it's for people who are. Really, you know, the oldest old or people who have specific physical needs. And so I think that image plays into that response. And then 20% responded with other and they shared what those other thoughts were. And this too could be grouped into three categories. So some of the reasons they don't see, use the COA are because of the pandemic. I tend to do my workouts outside due to the pandemic. I've stayed away from indoor classes and I don't have Zoom. And we asked questions about COVID pandemic and how that's influenced you. And about 30% say they won't, they're still not comfortable doing indoor activities. Again, this was done in the spring, so keep that in mind. A fair number of people talked about the challenge of meeting new people. I'm socially very shy and hesitate to do things alone. And that became a theme. If there was just one or two comments, we didn't group it or share that. So it was enough that it was notable. And then many people said they don't need the programs or services. I'm not sure the programs are targeted for someone like me, active and independent. And I have to add two more comments because I thought they were really powerful and it goes to the image of the COA. I still don't consider myself to be old. Honestly, council on aging sounds like the very act of aging requires intervention. And another comment, candidly, there's a labeling issue. I don't identify as potential domain of a council on aging despite my advancing age. And so that goes to those 80 years olds who don't think they're old enough for the COA. Something to consider. Okay, so then let's talk a little bit about economic insecurity. Sherburne is clearly a wealthy community. The median income in Sherburne is about twice that of the median income from Massachusetts. And even for those 60 and older, the median income is almost twice that. And yet still, people have some financial concerns. So there were many comments throughout about the cost of taxes and the overall cost of living. Just a few, or I think I shared just one here, can I afford it, home yard maintenance, taxes and cost of living? But also, we asked the question, do you agree with the statement, I have adequate resources to meet my financial needs, including home maintenance, home maintenance, I'm sorry, personal healthcare and other expenses? 13% of the survey respondents either disagreed or strongly disagreed with that statement. And 20, and from the US Census data, 21% of households headed by someone aged 65 and older. Report annual incomes under $50,000 with 7% of those 65 and older report an income over 20, under $25,000. So there's definitely a pocket of Sherburne residents who are economically vulnerable. Social isolation is a key issue facing Sherburne older adults. I think that title could say facing Massachusetts older adults or all older adults, especially since the pandemic. Social isolation has been a real concern. But from the survey, 15% of respondents aged 60 to 79 in Sherburne report not knowing someone within 30 minutes of them who they could call on help, on for help. And almost half of all the respondents said they wouldn't ask a neighbor for help if needed assistance with a minor task or errand. So Sherburne's a spread out community. People have larger acres. It's harder to get to know your neighbors, but. Finding better neighborhood networks is one thing to consider for Sherburne. And then 17% of respondents acknowledged they felt excluded in Sherburne. And while the most common reason was for income. Several noted the challenge of getting to know people in Sherburne, especially when you're new to town. And I mentioned that earlier. And then in the interviews, some of the town leadership reported an increase in scams. And I add that under social isolation. Partly because scams target the vulnerable, so they target older adults, they target people who live alone. And people who live alone or who are socially isolated are more apt to fall for scams, right? They, they answer the phone and they want to talk to people. So I think it's an important concern. And one person commented, I feel that COVID-19 has reduced my ability to fully enjoy the final part of my life by limiting travel opportunities. And my ability to interact with others. Let's talk a little bit about caregivers. We asked if people now or in the past 12 months have provided care or assistance to a person who's disabled or frail. And I think the average was 25% of all ages, or maybe it was a little higher, 27% provide care. I wasn't surprised at the 39% of the younger group. They're often providing care for their parents. But I think it's worth noting that 26% of those 80 and older are providing care, people who may need care themselves and they are, might be struggling. Among the caregivers, 61% reported that it's challenging to provide care and meet their daily responsibilities. Some housing challenges, this came up a lot. So eighty one percent of respondents want to stay and and remain in. Living in Sherborne as they age. This um. Varied a little by group, but if you look at those, the blue and the red, very important and somewhat important. For the older age group, it's ninety four percent want to stay in Sherborne. And it gets a little bit less, but still. Overall eighty one percent want to remain in Sherborne. And yet, there were many comments related to how they're going to remain, how they can afford main or. Do the maintaining and adapting and affording their home and also related to um limited downsizing options. If my currently perfect health and fitness eventually decline, will I be able to maintain my property or home independently? And when I do retire in six to eight years, I'll be considering moving due to the town's taxes. If I could afford to stay and housing was available, I would consider staying. Okay, and this, living in Sherborne, my guess is no one's surprised by the challenge of transportation. Most of the survey respondents still drive, but they, many commented about their concerns when they no longer can drive. So sixteen percent of survey respondents either modify their driving or don't drive. And that number was higher um with age. Thirty eight percent of those eighty and older don't drive or modify their driving. And modify their driving might be their. Um, not driving at night or in inclement weather or only driving in local, you know, within a mile or two from their home. And not driving at night limits someone's ability to participate in. You know, evening activities, not driving in inclement weather might cause someone to be socially isolated in the winter. So modifying the driving, although it's great that they know to modify their driving, it really can um impact them. Um, and then we asked people, you know, have you had challenges meeting your transportation needs? And I share this just by that those, this isn't really that surprising, but those who don't drive or drive with modifications. Have many more challenges meeting their transportation needs than those without, who drive without modifications. Someone's wrote total dependence on my car for transportation, sooner or later, we'll all need to stop driving due to health limitations. And not having easy access to public transportation or walkable streets. Then communication within departments and with residents could be improved. So all the people we interviewed spoke about the need for improved communication among the town departments that work with older adults. And several people spoke about people working in silos and that we need to work to bed, work together to better support the older residents. And then thirty nine percent of survey residents reported they wouldn't know who to contact in Sherborne if they needed help accessing social services. Health services or municipal services. So. And, and although I didn't talk about it throughout, a lot of the programs that people wrote about, you already have, but they was, they wanted. You know, they didn't know it was available or there are a lot of different things that people just didn't know about that are really available. So that communication crossed a lot of topics. And then um, from the interviews that we had, a couple of themes emerged, very similar to what emerged and what we spoke about. The space, communication, transportation, economics, housing, social isolation and mental health challenges. But the other theme that emerged was Sherborne older residents aren't viewed or viewed as undervalued asset to the community. And I want to just share a few things about that. Um, people shared that older residents play a really large role in town. They volunteer, they are active in town government. They're a community minded group that contribute to the tax base. And yet, funding is prioritized for school age children. And what people shared was that um, they don't want their taxes to go up, so they don't vote for a senior building. But, and no one votes for a senior building because the older adults aren't supporting it, but that when anything for schools is up. They might not vote for it, the older residents, but other people do. So their taxes are going up anyway, but they're not getting the benefit of it. Um, something to keep in mind. So let's talk briefly um about some of the recommendations and strategies that we share to support. The current and really next generation of older adults. Please keep in mind that as I share these, the recommendations in the report are much more specific. There's lots more and the more details. But even those are just intended to give you suggestions of paths forward that exist for your community. There's no way you could implement all the recommendations and they really aren't listed in any order or pri- priority. That's for the town to decide which are most feasible um and which uh, for lack of a better word, which would get you. The most bang for your buck and reach the most older adults. So I'll share these just briefly for each topic. So to address the space concerns. Advocate for at least some dedicated space. Um, it seems like you have a little more than you had when this was first done, but. Dedicated space maybe in the community center where you can keep some equipment. Consider some innovative options for programming, like collaborating with local businesses if there's space. If um, a new business comes in, maybe advocate for a local coffee shop and have a, a men's group there on Wednesday mornings or. Intergenerational programs that can be held in schools or outdoor programming, just some innovative space options that might be available. And the recommendation from this is to not think about a standalone center at the present time to reconsider it. When both the libraries complete, sta- taxes are stabilized and maybe inflation has gone down a bit. It doesn't seem from the report um, from the findings that there would be enough support for it at this time. Then strategies to increase reach of the COA. And so I said just a few minutes ago that. These recommendations aren't in any priority, but the first one of increasing staffing really is because all the other recommendations I'm going to suggest. Um, require staff, so increasing staffing or increasing budget for the COA. Because although the town might not support um, a senior center building. One way to show value to, that you value older residents is by increasing the support that you can give them through a budget. And all of these recommendations really can't be done on the staff, with the staffing that you have. Um, explore strategies to change the image of the COA from a place for the oldest and most vulnerable to a place for older adults. Where any older adults of any age can come to learn, exercise, socialize and benefit from a variety of services. And we have lots of suggestions of ways to do that. Um, and then because of COVID and to address people who can't leave their home, ensure that programming space is equipped with the ability for residents. To participate via Zoom or video conferencing of sorts. To address economic vulnerability, one is the communication piece. So educate the community about what's already available. So like you have Turk tax work off programs, um, expand those programs or educate people about that. Develop new programs, so small grant programs, for example, to um, for home repairs, something like that. Offer educational workshops on topics such as retirement or home equity. To address socialization and decrease isolation. So consider ways to welcome first time COA participants. And I think this is really important. There was so many comments about being new to Sherborne, feeling uncomfortable, you know, initiate a buddy program, a new members program. Make sure there are volunteers who, who can welcome someone each ti- anytime they come who's new. Um, consider implementing a surrogate grandparent program. That's a great way to increase neighborhoods and networks of people who know each other in. In town. And uh, you know, involve the police and hold a workshop on tips and tricks to avoid scams. Again, just a few examples of some recommendations. Strategies to support caregivers, explore ways for the COA to connect and find out who these family caregivers are. You know, a caregiver resource fair, a caregiver night out, a variety of ways to do that. And consider some dementia friendly training and programming, maybe um. Provide transportation to neighboring memory cafes is another way to support caregivers of people with, and people with dementia. Support safe and accessible housing, so um, distribute materials and hold workshops about home modifications and repairs. A lot of um, other towns keep lists of local contractors and handymen that are maybe vetted. Um, some of them will offer discounted coupons to people. Again, all this takes time and staff. Promote awareness of various housing options across the lifespan and even in Sherborne. Um, a few people shared that Sherborne now has guidelines that people can rent and access their, a unit in their house or an accessory unit. And a lot of people don't know about that. So again, that goes along with um, increasing for, with communication and increasing awareness. Transportation ops, options, many towns have formal volunteer programs such as the FISH. Let's see, it stands for friendly. Independent sympathetic help, I think, but it's a formal volunteer transportation program typically to um, medical appointments. Promote, support people so they can drive as long as they can safely. So AARP has car fit programs and safe driver courses. Support those, you can run those programs um, and explore ways to increase walkability in town. And that, I write that, um, I know that's hard in Sherborne, but there were a lot of comments about people wishing there was a walkable downtown. And that there was housing downtown where they could then walk to a lot of community, a lot of. Things. And strategies to improve communication. Um, in a town like Sherborne, that small word of mouth can make a difference. So encourage current user, COA users to promote it amongst their friends and neighbors. Um, we asked people how they get their information and it was really mixed and that varied by age a bit. But while I think it's important to make a social media presence and continue with electronic, um. Spread information electronically via the web. It's really important, at least for the next ten years and maybe longer to continue print. The link is a really valued, the newsletter. The link is an extremely valued resource by Sherborne residents. And then consider monthly meetings for representatives from town departments who interact with older adults. It can be to discuss. Residents, it can be to share information about what's going on and it can be just to support each other and to interact and socialize. So I want to end on a, up, an uplifting note. And I want to make sure that you realize that there were many positive comments, both about how people love living in Sherborne. They love the natural resources of it, the outdoor spaces, but also about the council on aging. The council on aging is a good organization. They've dedicated, they have a dedicated board and want to do the right thing for the town and its seniors. When needed, it's been helpful to me particularly regarding matters of healthcare insurance coverage and questions about social security. I believe staff members have done a wonderful job helping those who need help the most. The COA staff does a fine job providing support, support cultural classes and info referrals to our elders. And my favorite and final comment is keep up the good work. I will eventually need you. So for when they need them. So before I take questions, I want to just thank you for having me today. I want to reiterate that this is just a snapshot of the results. We hope the findings are helpful as your communities move, community moves forward in developing an action plan to support older adults. Living in Sherborne. It's been a real, a true pleasure working with Sue Kelleher and the entire board members on this important project. And I'd especially like to thank members of the community who contributed to the study by participating in the survey. You have an active community who really wanted their voice heard, which is wonderful. And also to the town leaders who, who gave their time and shared their thoughts and insight during the interviews. So now Caitlin Quill is here with me and will take any questions that you have. I will stop sharing, but I can go back uh, and share as needed. I can pull it back up.
So I have. So uh, this is wonderful. I'm really excited about this. Thank you for doing this. I'd like to. I think all of us want to help our seniors, but the issue always has been how and what's the most effective way to do it? And you've given us a lot of things to think about and ponder. But we need an implementation plan with prioritization of. What to do first and what to do second. So I, I gather from your report, the first thing. That you would recommend doing is, is to increase the budget and get more staff. But who, is, will it be the council on aging? Board that would kind of sort through these things and, and say the next thing we want to do is uh. And pick one of the recommendations and focus on that and, and, and kind of put them in order for us, or is that? To be the board of selectmen or, or what's, what's your recommendation about how to implement?
Sure, I, I can share my thoughts and Sue Kelleher, you can add some thoughts or Caitlin. So. First of all, some of the topics cross multiple categories, right? So communication might be one of the bigger ones. Um, that I might, might or might not start with, but I would say that people who are involved, either the council on aging or. Uh, and the board or the council on aging and other leadership within the town, working together to see what's feasible. What um. And, and what could reach the most older adults? What's going to make that biggest impact? Um, it's going to take time, but I, I do think an, an action plan is needed to be developed to then guide you forward. And yeah, and I'll, I mean, I think that's up to the town. I don't know if Sue or Caitlin or anyone else has other thoughts on that.
Yeah, um, I was hoping that the, we would take this um, report now with the board and come up with that action plan. And then present it to the people that we needed to get on board and support us, so.
This is Caitlin, just to chime in, just based on our experience in working with other communities who, who've done this and sort of taken these reports to the next uh, phase. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that many of these things may happen simultaneously and there are some sort of longer term recommendations. Or related to sort of space and, and staffing and all of that, that need to sort of be worked towards over a, a longer term period. And then there are also sort of some more short term things that can be done um, that may be able to be tackled by um, you know, the COA board or others. So I think thinking about it in terms of, you know, sort of what's, what can be, what can we, what can we do now to improve? Um, the town and, and then sort of what are the ultimate goals that we're working towards is another way to think about it.
And I think one of the um, you know, goals is to make uh, the initiative across the state is to make. Towns age and dementia friendly. So you take those components of what that entails and what the results of the report are. And combine them together and then come up with like Caitlin said in little, you know, in spurts. Cause we can obviously do everything and some of the stuff we have done, you know, we just recently had the car driving, the AARP car driving. Um, class and so some of it we've already implemented, but um, of course, there's always, we have room for improvement.
See me, I don't, I don't know whether you could hear me or not because I opted to get in without video.
Charlie, this is Jeff, we can hear you.
I'm sorry.
We can hear you fine, Charlie, it's Jeff.
Thank you. I just want to say, money well spent. This is what the community has needed. The analysis is right on. Sue Belger has done a, a wonderful job and I'm sorry that I have not been. More involved in it. You've got to understand that I'm almost ninety two years old. I'm one of the respondents. Uh, to this survey and I believe it. It is just what this community needs and uh, I'll back out here. Uh, but keep on keeping on. This is absolutely a wonderful event for Sherborne.
Thank you, Charlie. Charlie's still running the Boy Scout troop in town, by the way, just so you know.
The Boy Scouts and the Firewood Program. Which uh, could use a few volunteers and a few other uh. Few other things because the greatest joy in my life is serving this community. It's not the first ones, first one I've been in, but I've been here half my life. And it's a wonderful community, but it has, it has hurt itself. By not recognizing some of the principles uh, that Sue has. Quantified and emphasized in her analysis.
Thank you again, Charlie. And so um, Marion's next and then Serena, I see your hands raised too. So let's do Marion first and then Serena. So let's do Marion first and then Serena.
All right, yeah, I I echoes Charlie's comments, this really turned out to be a very valuable thing that the town has done. Thank you to the Sue and your helpers who made it happen. It it strikes me that there's a isolation and communication problem. At the same time that there are people who. There there are, there are programs that would be great to have in town to reduce that. But at the same time, we have a lot of volunteer power. In that age group. A lot of those, a tremendous percentage are too fit to consider themselves COA. Participants. And so you you know, rather than personally about throwing money at it. It seems to me that a lot of good thinking could be done about. Making making the most of the age group that has time to volunteer and make these things happen. The other comment I have is really a question, why does it have to be called the COA, the Council on Aging? Is that legally required? I mean, it's a very off putting title, as people have said.
It's it's not legally required and some of my towns have different names. So you could call this the Council on Fun Activities if you wanted.
Oh, really, I think we should think about that, because you know, a significant number of people are put off by the image.
I think this is Caitlin again, just speaking, I do think the the state has some.
Yeah, I think so too.
Some rules about the COA board, so the appointed board that oversees the the senior center has to remain Council on Aging. But to your point, there are many senior centers across the Commonwealth who are changing their names to things like the Center for Active Living. The Adult Community Center. That that kind of thing, so I I do think that the the piece about marketing and sort of messaging about what goes on. Is certainly something that there there can be made some improvements on.
Thanks, Serena.
Yes, I just wanted to to chime in, I raised my hand after Charlie spoke. Charlie is one of our most avid members of the Friends of the Council of Aging, of which I'm a charter member. The Friends have been in a in operation for about fourteen years. And we are very supportive of the Council on Aging. And and we will continue to to do so. And I just wanted to make sure that the townspeople knew that although we're a small group. We're very supportive and very anxious to be of help to seniors in Sherborne. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, thanks, Serena, and thanks for volunteering all your time also. I'm trying to see if, does anyone see any other hands raised? I don't see any other, Eric.
Just a couple of observations, I want to make very good presentation there. I guess I'm I'm not surprised, but I just disappointed that the seniors don't feel as though they have a voice. Because there's a few observations there, so five hundred and forty respondents represents thirty percent of the people over fifty five. Who responded to the survey, that means around fifteen hundred people or maybe sixteen hundred people are actually over fifty five in town. Was the majority of actually the voting population for people eighteen and over in town. I think Jackie can tell me better, but I think our, what's our voting population, twenty five hundred, something in that range, I think, our total voting. And and if you look at any volunteer group, including this board, the majority of people are over sixty who actually volunteer on this. And so there, and given that we're looking for volunteers, there are certain, I think, there is some empowerment in there. And it's disappointing to hear that that perception is is out there. And and that's just an observation I have there. The other thing, when I saw the comments on building a structure, building a building for a senior center. Two of those comments, well, the five, six comments, or two of them are directly associated with the library and certain. You know, disenfranchised with the library situation. Hopefully, as time goes on, the memory of that starts to wane and people will not be so allergic to public buildings. But I understand, I think, why some of that is in there. Second thing and the third thing is, and the table in the graph you showed with average age, how the percentage of people in town are going to. Projected to increase and has been increasing since nineteen ninety. I find it interesting because at some point I saw a survey and I want to say. It was in the early two thousands, not a survey, statistical analysis of the population of Sherwin in many of the surrounding towns. At that point, Sherwin had the highest average age of all surrounding communities in all areas there. So if that percentage increases, then proportionately, we're going to be higher than than other communities around there. It's just an observation, I'd be interested to see how we do compare right now even to the surrounding communities. And I guess those are my only observations with that there, and I think it's a very good presentation. And I agree that I think, you know, I guess the other more anecdotal observation I'll do is I have. At my age, I have numerous friends who live in the suburbs, whose kids are graduating high school and becoming empty nesters. And I want to say what half of them had planned to move to some urban area, move it moved out when they, when the kids graduated. And none of them have done so yet, so I think they're actually, we can project more kind of people anchoring in town. And an increase in the. In the population and in three years, I hope to get that survey at my house as well.
I I want to just respond one thing. Eric, you mentioned something, you mentioned the two comments that related to the library. And I will say that that came out loud and clear through many of the comments, I just pulled a snapshot of it. But that's clearly what's on people's minds right now. And I do think in five years or as time waits, that may change. But I'll see.
Yeah, I I guess I would just add, there's been a lot, I mean, who's always busy, as is the 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 council. You know, they have new offices on the second floor of Town Hall, so that's changed, like even having some space to have have private conversations. So that's going on, we had that MBTA, what's the name of that program, the Dial-A-Ride program or whatever it's called?
Yeah, the Dial-A-Ride.
We just added the Dial-A-Ride program, which gives rides for two or three dollars to neighboring communities. And gives rides for medical appointments in Boston for a fee of five or six dollars. So there, it's not a static situation, obviously, they've done a lot of things even recently. And the only other point I'll add, I have a very senior mother-in-law and a very senior mother. And I I always send the COA letter that Sue mails me every Monday morning. None of the towns, the ones in Portland, Oregon, ones in central New Jersey, they don't have anywhere near the programs that Sherwin has. So while we have a long way to go and we have, as Charlie pointed out. We really have a phenomenal Council on Aging and the programs are great. And I don't care what they call it, Council on Aging, I want to do the programs too. So I think we have ways to approve, but we're really fortunate with what we do have also.
I am a dinosaur and I've already lost. The. Display of people. Jeff is one of the wonderful persons in this. Sherwin community who has served in so many different. Aspects for the community good. And now he's our chairperson, I know him personally from. A great deal of efforts that he has made to keep our community. Going.
Thanks, Charlie, I ran for election last year, though. But I appreciate your vote of support.
Seriously. Pay attention, we are greatly fortunate. That we are doing this right now and that we have. I know this could be misinterpreted. But we have the intelligentsia. The serious people who have been struggling in their own life struggles. Journeys. Who are concerned about our community. And that is the most invital, most vital thing. That we can adhere to. Twenty years ago, I. Championed, obviously, an uneconomic. Improvement to our. Treatment of, or no, not treatment, support of our. Less fortunate people. And. And I was wrong, it was not practical and all of that. And it got defeated and it was, that was the right outcome. But at that time, I knew that this community. Wanted to be. The same loving community that it was in eighteen fifty. And was still in nineteen fifty forty, no. Forty eight, forty nine, forty. Forty fifty. Just after World War Two. This community had done a wonderful thing and it was. And it still is in a wonderful position to influence. The rest of our. Hopefully, state and nation. Keep it.
Thank you, Charlie, very, very motivating and I think it's really a good cap to this presentation. And I really want to thank the UMass Boston team and Caitlin and Sue and Sue Kelleher, of course. And the entire COA and Friends of the COA. For for bringing this to us and. Timing is good because the budget year is coming up, so you attack advisory in December. But really, I think it is communicating in both directions. You talked a lot about the report, communicating with seniors about what's available. But I think it's equally important to communicate with all the younger people in town to make them more sensitive and more aware to go next. Like Sue said, go next door and, you know, shovel your neighbor's walk or rake some leaves for them or whatever, whatever it is. But little things matter too.
Yes.
All right, so I think we're going to do the. A a diaphragction here, we've got, we've got, now we're talking about a technical high school project, so I think it's a good.
Thank you very much, everyone, it was truly a pleasure working with Sue and with all of you, good luck as you move forward. And don't hesitate to reach out, thanks.
Thank you, Sue.
So I would like to now turn to Tri-County Vocational Tech and I think Dan Hanes is here, are you? Unmuted, Dan, where are you?
I I am unmuted, can you hear me okay?
There you are, yep, I can, I had to move your little screen a little bit, then I'll be better off, I can find you, but yes, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's great to be here in in Sherborne via Zoom. But it is, it's it's a wonderful community, I did listen to most of that presentation by Sue, that was, that was wonderful. Some great comments by Charlie, so you know, it's great to listen in, get get a little feel for the communities that are in our our district. So I'm with you this evening, Dr. McGuire could not make it. So so you do have me presenting a little information on our upcoming building project. I just wanted to share some information about that with you. Thank you, Diane, for for pulling this together and bringing us out here. The last time we were here with you was, I believe, in the spring and we were talking about the budget, so it's nice to be here again. And our long-serving school committee member from Sherwin, Mr. Douse, I believe is with us this evening also. And he can help fill in the blanks or if I misspeak, he can, he can jump in. So if you don't mind, maybe I could share my screen.
Absolutely, go go ahead, Dan. And as you probably know, your presentation was also in the packet. That went out.
Yes, I I I'm, yes, I'm glad it, glad it was, it was there. I'm hoping people had a chance to look at it. So you know, what we'll do is we'll just, you know, walk through this slideshow. A little bit in, I can get this.
Need to go to the presentation view or whatever down on the lower right, that little. Yeah, that one, no, to the right, one more to the right, I think that one, there you go, you got it, perfect.
Okay. All right, so let me just, you know, fill you, where are we in this process? So we we started with eligibility over a year ago. We are in the 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 number three here, we're just about to submit our PSR. Preferred schematic report to the MSBA for approval. So we've, we've done some visioning, we've, we've had visioning sessions, we've had a couple of community meetings to talk about our education plan. Talk about Tri-County, the building started in nineteen seventy seven, so it's been, you know, it's in an aging building. But well maintained and that that's, that's been the message that we've heard all along. So we are going to be voting and I'll get a little bit more into the dates later on in the presentation. But we're, we're going to, we're going to be voting a preferred option later this month. And we're going to send our preferred option to the MSBA for approval. We do need approval before we move to schematic design, which is part four here. They they will give us their blessing on on, you know, the the proposal that we've selected. From there, that the schematic design will do a deeper dive into that preferred option, what the costs are. Will be cost estimates and there'll be some more community presentations. And then we will move towards number five and we'll have to present our, before we do that, present our schematic design. To the MSBA in June of two thousand twenty three for another approval. Then we will be looking to fund the project, so that that is option five. And we're, we're hoping for September, early October of two thousand twenty three, when we'll come to the communities. To seek funding for our school project. So this is, you know, what I just talked about, the the public visioning sessions that we've had, an existing conditions review. We've, we moved to this preferred design program. And we we brought three, three prom proposals forward. The MSBA requires that you look at more than just a new school and more than just a renovation. So we we've looked at some concepts and I'll, I'll get into those a little bit. We did submit that preferred design program on August fifth and it would be December twenty eighth when we do the. The schematic report to the MSBA. So let me, let me just do a little, you know, deeper dive into. You know, what what this looks like, so we are working with DRA, they are architects. And Dor and Whittier are OPMs and they're working, shepherding us through this project. So here's Tri-County from an aerial view, you can see the yellow lines around that, that is, those are the border. That's the property that that Tri-County rests on, building is somewhat in the middle. So like I said, option one, we was one of the the first early renovation options we looked at. But it really didn't address the code and and facility deficiencies and there were no real educational improvements. And more importantly, the MSBA would not participate financially to any great extent. In in this minimal renovation project that we had first looked at, they they may reimburse for doors and windows. But they wouldn't participate to a great extent. So what we did is we took this renovation option one, combined it with. This renovation option three point one that we were looking at and we developed an option three point one one. That we, we we've explored and we also have an option four. And we are required to look at a new school that, and we've, we've looking at, looking at NC three. So these are the, these are the options that we we have some further, we've looked at in further detail. So let's talk a little bit about three point one one. What, you know, this, this is another, you know, schematic aerial drawing here of the building. And and you can see this white area here would be a new auditorium, this would be a complete renovation of the entire school. And there'd be some additional work on the entranceway. So and and the reason for that would be to our, you know, programs like cosmetology and culinary. Where we have community coming in, we service the community, they'd have a dedicated entrance. So they wouldn't be walking through the building to any great extent, you know, adds another layer of security. This is, this is what it would look like conceptually, so here, this, this white area would be a, you know, a. Um so here, this, this white area would be a, you know, a newer section. And then the, the building that would be renovated in, in total. And this would be the, the, you know, the new entrance way that would be developed to, to have the, you know, the culinary and, and uh cosmetology space. Um just some more drawings of the high bay shops, the construction cluster. You know, again, in this, in this three point one-one renovation, all of the shops would get, you know, a renovation and then up, you know, an up, an uplift. And you know, the other thing that can, you know, that I, I do want to point out when, when we're talking about renovation, especially renovation in, in a technical school swing space, and that's what they call it, swing spaces, an issue. So what do you do with the students while you're renovating a building? Now, you can, you can try to do as much work in the summer, but you can't get it all done in the summer. And you know, it's, it's hard to teach auto tech in a, in a trailer. So that, that is one of the real, you know, challenges in a renovation project of a vocational school. Um so the number four, um this addressed a little bit of that swing space issue. Because if you look here, this is, this is actually a parking lot, this purple, um these, this three, these three buildings here. Um this is a parking lot right now. We would, we would complete an addition here. Um then we would move some of the students into this new addition, this new wing. Um while we were renovating the, the, the structure here. So you know, the students, we, we build this first and then we'd move the students in um to address some of that swing space uh issue. This would be a new parking lot that would be instructed to replace the parking lot that would be um taken over. And here's an, in another view of that um from, from, from above and, and what it would look like from behind the building. Right back here where the, is, is a solar field. Um that's, that's what that structure is. So here, here's just another view. Um and again, the, the, the entrance ways would be, you know, would, would all be newly renovated to, again, dedicated entrances for the culinary and cosmetology um departments. Um this is the second floor plan. Another, another, you know, that we, it came out of the visioning sessions is, is that we want more collaboration space between our classrooms and, and the shops. So you know, classroom space will be nearer to the shops. You know, the way the building is structured now, the, you know, academic side is, is a, is a bit separate from the, the shop side of the, of the house. Uh this would be the first floor plan, again, that, you know, those dedicated entrances, here's the culinary and the cosmetology um over here. Um so the, the new construction option, when we were looking at this, here's some of the, you know, the A, B, C, D, E. Um so if we were to construct a new building, where would we put it? On, on this, you know, the grounds and the, the area that we have um access to. We really considered A, B, and C to, to not really fit um because we were really going to be close to our butters and we wanted to be respectful of their space. Fields, our sports playing fields would be an issue because those would have to be uh moved if we built in any of these areas here. E was ruled out for topographical issues. If you've ever been to the school, the driveway to get in is right here. And this is a pretty steep hill um that, that we would have challenge with. So where we really landed was in D, um this D section, which is where the, you know, the, the solar field is. Um so we would, we'll, you know, work with the company, repurpose those solar fields either, you know, on the roof or above the parking lots. Uh I think we are eight years into the use of this, this solar field here. So this white structure back here, that, that would be the new building. That would be where the solar field is. This is the existing structure, which after the, you know, the building is, is constructed. This would be, you know, torn down, all the fields would be renovated. This, you know, this, this is, you know, really, you know, beautiful space um back here. This is what it would look like. It, it also would have a better transportation pattern. Uh you can see the buses would move, could move freely around the entire building. Um that is not the case currently. Um again, this is the first floor plan. We'd have the construction cluster together. High bay shops, main entrance, the customer entrance with a Cosmo and, and Culinary Arts, early education. Um it's, you know, the, the space for our post-secondary programs that we house at the school. Um the second floor plan with the gymnasium and auditorium. Um in, in a, you know, the common library, learning common area here. And again, more of that collaboration space between the classroom and the, and the shops. I did go a little too fast there. Um so the process, um if I can go back aside. So the process to, to, when we move to the vote, um it's a, it's a district ballot election. Um our district agreement states that um it would be voted in accordance with chapter seventy-one, section sixteen N. So that is a, it's, it's unique. It's a unique voting process. Every voting resident in the, in the eleven communities would vote at the same time on the same exact ballot question. We would issue debt for thirty years. Um the debt repayment assessment is based on the October one enrollment. Um and, and this, this has an, an effect on, it has an effect on Sherborne. Um so if you have less than five pupils, currently Sherborne has one student. Um there's a assumed five pupil minimum for the, for the capital debt assessment. And here's a look at our enrollment, um comparing our ten-one-twenty-two enrollment to the recent enrollment. We've had an uptick of thirty-eight students um from our, from our twenty-three um calculation. Um there's the one freshman student for Sherborne, and there was, you did not have any students in the twenty-three calculation. You know, we feel that the, you know, the, the increasing enrollment um is attributed to the, you know, career technical education being in the forefront. Um we just, the governor was just at our building in October for a visit. Um he's been a big champion of, of career tech education in his tenure as governor. Um so we're happy to um have him come and visit. Um we, the building, um we do have, we had to do an enrollment study. And there, there's an enrollment that's, that's agreed upon between the school and the MSBA, and that was a thousand students. So we feel that that is our, you know, the, the number of enrolled students that would, would be the optimal amount for the district. Um so we're at nine thirty-three currently. So some important dates. Um so there's another community presentation at Tri-County on December eighth at six o'clock. Um the architects and the OPM um do present on the building. And, and they have a lot more detailed information than I'm presenting to you. Uh we are having a town clerk's information breakfast on December eighth. Um we're going to invite the town clerks from all eleven communities to talk about that district-wide vote that I just mentioned. Tri-County does, we are required to pay for that district-wide vote. I didn't, I didn't want to mention that. Um there's a joint school committee and school building committee on December fifteenth, where we will determine our selected uh preferred option that we're going to bring forward to the MSBA for approval. Um the preliminary schematic design report, um that's the, the option that we select that will move forward and get some, a, a deeper dive. Um we'll be presenting that in June of twenty-three. And as I mentioned, the community-wide vote to fund the project would be September, October of twenty-three. So I'm, I'm sorry, I went through that rather quickly. Um of all of these documents um are on our Tri-County building site, which is tri-countybuilding.com. Um is, there's a wealth of information um on that site. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If I could just um say, I, I'm a member of the uh building committee. I've been involved with this since uh we started meeting back in the uh spring, what, about a year and a half ago now, Dan?
Yes.
Um one of the things we've done as a building committee is try to make sure we're open as possible. This website has all our minutes on it. Um everything that we've discussed is on this website. If you want to see it uh more in depth, it's, it's all there. Uh when it comes to the, to the vote, um as Dan alluded to, uh talked about was, you know, the town quirks. We're gonna have to, the town quirks are gonna have to work together. We're gonna have to have a vote within the eleven communities on the same day. And I believe with the way it's written, the vote cannot be shorter than four hours and no longer than eight. And we cannot combine it with uh anything else. So we'll have just, uh it'll be a single ballot question for this, for this. A lot of things we're trying to address within this, and we've had a lot of information. Uh a lot of research has gone in. Our architect ha, has met with the teachers, the students, a lot of discussion. This building is a fifty-year-old building, needs a lot of uh work to do it. One of the numbers that we were talking about, just to fix issues within the building, we're talking a hundred and sixty-five million dollars that will not, we would not see any reimbursement from the state except for maybe windows and doors. So we're kind of at a crossroad where we need to put some money back into this building. We're trying to do what is the best option is for our communities.
So that really was my question, if I could, Jeff?
Yeah, except before you uh do, Paul, uh if you, Dan, if you could unshare, uh then we can see everybody uh that wants to speak easier. And John, thank you for your support for a long time on, on this program. So we're very appreciative to have you uh represent Sherwin there. So um oh, go ahead, Paul, and then Eric next.
So I just wanted to get a sense of the, the dollars involved. Different options. Three members of the Select Board are former advisory committee members here in town. I'd like to get a sense of uh the, the range of projects, what the, not, not the exact dollar amount, but sort of a rough ballpark, what's involved with each of them. And the share that would be applicable to Sherwin of that, like what uh, what percent would Sherwin have?
Okay, yeah, that's a great question. So it, you know, right now, the projects um renovation and new school are, are very similar in cost. And it, it, as you all know, it's, it's a difficult time to be entering the construction market with the uh inflationary issues and the um supply chain issues. So I mean, we're, we're looking at about, and this was mentioned last night at school committee, so I can share it with you. Um two hundred and eighty million would be the, the project cost. MSBA reimbursement, they, they do have a cap on their square footage reimbursement rate of three hundred and sixty dollars per square foot. That's unfortunately woefully inadequate right now. Um they have a board meeting later this month where they're, they will be discussing, you know, increasing that cap, which would, you know, have a, have an impact on, on the future projects um in the reimbursement rate. Um so their potential reimbursement ranges from sixty-eight million to ninety million, ninety-two million. That would be their participation in the project. Um we have our financial advisor. Uni, Unibank is looking at um how towns would be impacted. Again, as I mentioned, because there's that five pupil minimum, so if, if Sherborne only has one student, you would participate in the, in the future debt payments of the, of the project it, for five students.
That's five out of, you said it's being built for a thousand students, so is that?
Yeah, we have nine thirty-three right now, currently.
So could I take five over a thousand and multiply it times roughly one ninety million? Um two hundred and eighty million minus ninety million reimbursement? Um and that would give me a rough idea what Sherwin.
Very, very rough. And, and as we move further into the process with schematic design, you know, those numbers will become more in focus and, and we will be working with the, the financial advisor to come up with some reasonable, um reasonable borrowing rate, um given that fluctuation of the, the borrowing market right now. Um so that, those numbers will become, will come more into focus as we move through schematic design. Um we'll definitely have another um session like this, certainly before we move to the community vote, and those numbers will be presented in great detail. So that folks will know how much it, it is going to impact their tax bill.
Thank you.
Uh Eric had his hand up next.
Just a question about the community-wide vote. That was interesting what John said, how they often be like within pretty much contemporaneous of each other within, within hours. So I guess, how does it work? Do you need a majority vote from like two-thirds of the communities that enter it? And it'd seem a shame if like Sherwin voted against it with one student, you know what I mean? And that's killed the whole thing. I'm sure that can't happen. But what are the logistics of like, how does it pass? How does it not pass?
It's simple, it's simple majority. So it's simple majority of the, the resident, the voters in the eleven communities who come out to vote. It's a, it's simple majority of the voters.
So they're all massed together as one big voting number, essentially?
Yes.
Okay, Marian?
Yeah, I, I don't want to uh take a lot of time during this meeting, but I'm wondering, Dan, if on the website that you referred us to, we'd find information about the programs that would be improved? I mean, what are the educational programmatic improvements? Uh not just the architecture. I know you had to focus on the buildings themselves here, but will I find that on the website?
Yeah, yeah, some of the educational visioning sessions that we had with Dr. Locker, um the, the notes from that are, are, are on the website. Yes, though that, thank you for asking. That, that is, and for bringing that up because that, that's a key component. Um the, the education plan is something that the MSBA looks at in great detail. Um because there has to be an educational benefit to, to what we're doing with the building.
Yeah, I mean, the, the education plan should drive what?
It does. It absolutely does.
Uh so if you are going to uh propose a completely new building, which you say is about the same as renovations, it, it, I'm wondering, first of all, what happens to the old building? And uh what I, well, when you say renovations, of course, we don't know the details. They can be light renovations or heavy renovations. They could be complete, you know, gutting of the building or, or, or just strengthening of certain aspects of it. So I'll look at the website, but.
Yeah.
I won't ask.
Yeah, we, we do have some ADA issues in the building, um even with our classroom. Um the doors entering each of the classroom, it, it, they're not wide enough um for, for wheelchairs um to enter. So yes, even, even on a, a renovation, the three point one-one, um there would be significant renovations within the building um to address some of those deficiencies and to address the educational deficiencies that were noted in our um ed plan.
It's surprising that even uh a, a really complete renovation plan oh it done conservatively, you know, done intelligently, would cost as much as a new building.
Yes.
Surprise.
Yes, it, it, that, I, I was actually surprised by that also.
It's, it's renovation is way harder, Marian, because it is partly because it extends over time. You have much longer time of construction because you can't start out building an open space and then just cut over. It's much harder to do a renovation.
Yeah. It would take an, it, an additional year to renovate the building, um beyond what a new school construction would be.
Yeah, they talk about two years for uh new construction versus three years for uh renovations. The total of uh new construction would be a total of three years by tech, with a year to remove the old school.
Yep.
And then the other improvements to the property.
Yep. There's also a greater contingency that needs to be built into a renovation. Because when you're, when you're working in a fifty-year-old building, you, you don't know what's, what you can't see is where it costs substantially.
We have a library project in town, so we, we got that one down.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that, too, like the unknowns of a renovation.
Yeah.
And every, any construction project are, are a big factor that.
Even a home construction.
Contingency.
I wanna, I wanna say our architects actually done a, a very good job of evaluation of the building from our educational plan, which was reviewed and updated, to meeting with the teachers and the educational needs, needs of the school, but to also bring in all the different trades to evaluate. And they literally evaluate from the ground to the roof of this uh, this structure. So they've done a complete evaluation. It will be in that um. They've done a complete evaluation and it'll be in that, um, website report.
That's terrific. Now Serena, you had your hand up, you took it down. Did you have a comment?
Well, I was just curious, um, what is the, um, expected use of the building going forward in the next ten years? How many students do you anticipate matriculating through from Sherburne? And that was one question. The second question was, um, what are the outcomes of those students that have graduated? From the, um, school and where have they gone forward and where are they now? Maybe in the past five to ten years. And then lastly, um. You know, I, I know I'm coming from the senior support. But this is a lot of money for the town to be putting forward for. A very, it sounds like a very few number of students compared to a very large population. Of the Sherburne, uh, seniors, um, and so I'm just trying to understand the, um, dynamics of that. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we would love to have, uh, more Sherburne students in our building. Sherburne does, hasn't, um, filled the seats that, you know, they're allotted, um, in the agreement. Um, so it, you know, over the past, you know, I, I. I, I can go back maybe three years and, and tell you that this, there's only been maybe three, and then last year there were zero. Um, Sherborne students and, and you have one freshman this year. Um, so, so we'd love to see that participation increase, um, from, from Sherborne. Um, so our, our graduates, about fifty-three percent go to two to four year colleges. And we have a, a, a few that enter the military and we, you know, a lot of our students, um, go right to the workforce. I mean, our. Our HV, I'll, I'll pick on our HVAC, um, shop. I mean, students can graduate from there and, and get a, a job. Making some, some pretty good money, um, because there's such a high need. And I think that one of the reasons when, when Governor Baker came to visit, I mean, he did talk about that, that, you know, the, the trades. We need to develop, we need to bring more folks into the trades. Because as people retire, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to find plumbers, electricians, um, HVAC. So there, there's some great opportunities for the students coming out of the ECT programs. More, more, more so than, than we've seen in, in, in quite some time.
Yes, and I would add to that, you know, the, as everyone knows, the technology is changing so fast that everything's really got a lot of, uh, uh. Computer technology and IT is, you know, associated with, so it's really become very complex. It's not, not. You know, a traditional, uh, uh, trade really, it's really a combination of, of computer science and a lot of others, uh, aspects.
It's, that's very accurate.
If I'm not mistaken, you had an open house two weeks ago, is that right?
We did, we did have an open house. Yes, that was a very successful open house. Um, we moved that to the weekend and we get, you know. We, we had to have our, our expert car, um, parking attendant helping us to shuffle the cars in and out of, uh. The spots that we had available. Um, so yes, that were, that, that was very successful.
And I think, am I wrong, but I, I thought I heard that, that Dr. Lockard is a new, like, is it toe time with the new, is it new, um. Director of the school?
Um, Dr. McGuire is new. She started July of twenty twenty-one, yes.
Okay. It's kind of a.
Fantastic. She has a vocational education background. She, she was a vocational student. Vocational teacher, vocational administrator, um, went back and, and did get her doctorate and, and became, you know, now she's our superintendent. She's.
I would like to observe. That. This is a wonderful dialogue. And perhaps we are coming back to the community. That is necessary to, uh, continue the positive. Uh, evolution of our society. Uh, Jonathan Dows is here.
Yes.
Yes, he is a descendant of a remarkable person. Who established. Maybe that's too grandiose, but he was a motive force. Not only in Sherburne, but in Massachusetts. If we can continue as a community of Sherburne. To carry forward. The. Inestimable. Quality of people working together. We will eventually. Find our, we already are in the, in a wonderful position here in Sherburne. But I think Sherburne can be a leader. In establishing the basis for which our, our. Nation can come con, can come together. And recognize the principles upon which this nation was founded. And you do not, I should not say it that way. I hope you all appreciate the fact. That, given the evolution of our society. And the necessary circumstances of the real world. That the principles upon which this nation was founded. Are the most important principles. And if they cannot in the current world circumstance survive. And I hope lead the rest of the world. We are, uh, destined like so many civilizations before us. To. Not accomplish what eventually. Is going to accomplish in this world. Forgive me.
No, that's very good, Charlie. Thank you. Um, we have a little bit more agenda, so I don't want to, uh, take too much more time. I really liked the juxtaposition, though, the COA and the Tri-Valley really showed the generational shifts in both directions. So. John, you were gonna say something, I think?
Yeah, if I could actually say, um, I'm, I'm a graduate of Tri-County. I graduated nineteen eighty-one. I was actually the second graduating class of the school. Uh, my family history, my mother was on the founding committee to. To, uh, develop the school, the building committee and the original, uh, school committee. I think you'd be a lot surprised, the number of alumni, alumni out there that. Do a lot of work in people's houses around the, around the town, so. And go back to the counseling on aging. The, uh, Tri-County students from our legal and protective services actually came out and gave a lecture on elder fraud. Back in October. So.
I wish I were on visual, two thumbs up, uh.
We hear you, Charlie. We, we, we appreciate your, uh, inspiring words also, as always. Dan, thank you for taking your time to come to Sherburne tonight. We appreciate it very much.
Thank, thank you for the invite. I.
I, I know we're gonna have three students there next year, but I'm not sure that's, uh, confirmed yet.
We, we did have three families at open house from Sherburne, so, yeah, it'd be fantastic.
All right, thanks again, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. So now, if Tom Trainor's still with us, in addition to having. Good services in town, we need good water to drink in town also, Tom.
Thank you, Jeff. Let me bring up, uh, a slide set. Let me know if it's coming up.
Starting to, there it is. Maybe like he did go to presentation view if you can.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Very good. Well, thanks, thanks for helping me and, uh, thank you for having a ambitious agenda here. But I have about a half a dozen slides and I hope, uh. You'll find them, uh, interesting and informative. So, uh, the groundwater protection committee. He, uh, had been, uh, as you know, reestablished, uh, just, uh, two years ago. Uh, I'm the current chair. And we last met formally, uh, like this with your board back in April of, uh, uh, twenty-one. And, uh, you, uh, allowed us to present and approved our, our mission statement. And, uh, just a little background here. Right, I can sum it just in, uh, a sentence or two, uh, for, for your board and again for, uh. All the attendees here. We, we as a informed group, uh, really our advisory committee. And we're really concerned about the three things. One is, uh, my graphic here on the left, really, really, it's a better understand. Uh, this ground. Water source that we depend on and, and the risks that are faced. Uh, number two, we really feel a, a need, and you're gonna see that in some of these slides to, uh, educate residents. We have a lot of new residents are new to the concept of, uh, private, uh, well and septic and, and, uh. The advantages and some of the, some of the risks to that. And finally, of course, uh, as, as we're doing tonight, I need to, uh, uh, be talking to. Other town boards and committees. We're, we're an advisory committee. Uh, we have no budget, we have no staff, and that's fine. Uh, we have a, a great set of volunteers that you see, and this is a, uh, a screen, uh. A copy and paste from our website. If you have questions for our committee, you can always, uh, email us. So, uh, one more background slide, just to make sure. Uh, everybody is on the same page and understands, uh, the main, uh, challenges and complications. That, uh, you know, our, our, uh, committee, uh, talks about all the time. Of course, the challenge, uh, everybody knows. All our homes and businesses depend on our local groundwater. We do have a, a handful of homes. On MWRA water mainly through Framingham on the western edge of town. Um, but, uh, the, the, everything else is wells with, within town. I grabbed this map here, cause it's, I always find this interesting. Uh, many of you know the shape Sherborne right where my cursor is. All the, uh, white, uh, towns have public water supplies, either MWRA. Or their own, uh, town public wells, whereas any of the colored, uh, towns, either light green or blue. Uh, you can ignore that, uh, are sixty percent or, or more. On, uh, on private residential wells. So, other than our neighbor Dover, which is just over sixty percent. Uh, you know, our whole, uh, area, the world of Massachusetts. That's eastern Massachusetts is different, is different than Sherborne and. And, uh, uh, complicating that situation, of course, is we're a hundred percent on private. On site wastewater disposal or septic systems. And that is clearly our biggest threat to our, our, uh, our groundwater and our wells, our own, uh, septic systems. And, uh, the, one more recall, uh, when it comes to septic systems. Fortunately, uh, many of us, uh, are in the midst of, uh, replacing, uh, so older systems. That predate the, uh, the tougher regulations. Uh, more com- comprehensive regulations that came out in ninety-five, but a majority of homes. Uh, predate those, uh, uh. Uh, a better specification, so, uh, we still have a lot of cesspools in town. And so we're, uh, you know, people mentioning, uh, 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 things people need to worry about. As they age, as our houses age, we really need, need to, uh, you know, be replacing the septic system. So this is the situation, uh, we're in. Uh, I just wanted to show some of the major things and report on some of the major things we've been working on. As, as a committee, uh, in, in the three areas, uh, kind of the study and characterization of our resources. Uh, education and communications. I'm gonna go into, in, in, uh. Couple slides, uh, details on these, uh, uh, first items. And, uh, that's where we've done a bulk, bulk of our work this first two years. Uh, I will mention under education, I thought we had a very successful, uh, webinar, uh, last January. We had only over a hundred attendees stay for two hours, an hour of a presentation by an expert. And then an hour of question and answers. And I thought it was, but, what, very well received and the taped video is on our website and, uh. Yeah, a lot of supporting materials are also, uh, on that. Uh, as you could tell by our makeup of our board, we do a lot of communications with, uh. With other, uh, uh, town committees and, and, uh, town staff. So now I want to jump into, uh, some of the monitoring studies we can report. First is, and first to thank you for, uh, the, uh, select board here. And of course, also our advisory board, we were the. Some of the lucky few committees that got some, uh, town federal ARPA funding. We got a sixteen thousand dollar grant. To, uh, fund this ongoing, uh, uh, GIS well and septic mapping project. We had a very, uh, good intern, Rebecca Manley, from, uh, Clark University. With us for about five and a half months. Uh, we miss her, uh, as I speak. And she was able to, uh, dig through Board of Health files and, uh, document, uh, three hundred and eighty-six properties. And, uh, the, the map on the right happens to be, uh, the blue dots, the well locations, the red dots. The, uh, nearest corner of the leach field to that well and yellow dots is where cesspools, uh. Uh, are still on those properties. And some interesting things, some of you may be aware of, uh. You know, the challenges in searching well records, particularly for older homes. The state only really required a lot of this documentation, you know, um, maybe starting thirty years ago. So that right now, uh, in this sampling, which was about twenty-five percent. Of the hundred properties, uh, Rebecca was able to, uh, 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 map eighty-six percent of the wells and septics. But, uh, of those three eighty-six, uh, we all, we, we did have, the good news, we did have complete. Or, or major, uh, well drilling, important information such as. As the total well, depth of bedrock and depth of groundwater. The unfortunate thing is, and I think a lot of residents have run into this, is fifty-four percent of the properties had no. Uh, well drilling data and, uh, that's, that's just a, uh, a fact. It wasn't required back, back in the day. Uh, and we're. We've spent about twenty-five percent of our budget and we have about seventy-five percent of the town, uh, left to go. And the other map I wanted to mention is, this happens to be Cider Hill Lane. So you see the red and, uh, blue dots for the, uh. For these important, uh, systems. A, another, uh, very interesting and important, uh, uh, monitoring study we did. Uh, we've, we've developed a relationship with RCAP Solutions. They're a very interesting nonprofit based in Worcester. They get a lot of external funding. And they're mainly, uh, exist to help, uh, rural communities. Uh, in terms of, uh, areas like, uh, like health. And then, of course, they include the, uh, groundwater and water wells under their, their, their health bucket. And things like, uh, affordable housing. But, uh, uh, we actually had an RCAP person do the wellmate. It's, and we're actually gonna have that same person, uh, coming up this winter to do a septic seminar. But for this study, they off. they offered to study forty Sherborne properties for free for the most common parameters you'd want to test the drinking water well for. We posted this, Jeanne Guthrie posted the the announcement on the town website. And within twenty four, forty eight hours, we had like seventy five people sign up. So we had to tear that down. Otherwise, we would have had, I think, hundreds of people signing up for this. And Rcap started doing this a year ahead of time and had done four or five towns in central Mass. And this year, they did another four towns and there's some similar patterns. And here's the results for Sherborne on the right here for the small sampling set. Seventeen of the wells exceeded Mass DEP public drinking water supply standards. Fifteen for a very common issue with private wells, many of us have experienced it is simple cholera form, which is ubiquitous bacteria. It's in soil. It's on your carpets. It's on your hands. And but it shouldn't be in your your well if you if it's airtight and watertight to the outside world. And you've had it properly disinfected after any kind of major repair. But of course, you see, we had a high number of those. We also saw a little bit for radio radionucleotides like radon in uranium, which is not uncommon in this area because of of the bedrock bedrock wells. So that I thought was interesting. This was presented to the Board of Health a couple of weeks ago and they encouraged us to come up with some communication to residents. And we're actually working on that right now. One thing I want to mention before I get to the next area, which is the the new emerging PFAS area that you're reading about is to put the PFAS things into context. In terms of concentrations, most of these parameters like lead, iron, sodium, you're you're typically measuring at the part per million level or milligrams per liter. And in layman's terms, people tell me to use the analogy, that's like a cup of salt in the volume of a Olympic swimming pool. So think of that, a cup of salt in in this swimming pool. The next common item you might think of to be important to screen your well is for, and you've you've many of you have probably done it before or heard about it before, is the volatile organics, typical solvents like something like benzene or toluene or or dichloroethylene or something. Those are typically measured at part per billion level. And and the maximum contaminant levels are down there. And that's equivalent to a drop of water in an Olympic swimming pool. Part per billion. So that is my lead up to some PFAS results. There's two sets of data I want to show you and that will bring me to the end of the presentation. First one is the state, you know, every everyone, you know, in the world is really concerned about the 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 appearance of these synthetic chemicals that have been manufactured for forty years. They're in many of the commercial products we buy and we wear and we have in our house. And there's no, you know, getting around them. They're 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 starting to be more heavily regulated. The state, three to four years ago, started testing for the the presence of these contaminants in public water supplies. And given the frequency of their occurrence in public water supplies, felt, you know, we should really fund some some screening of our of our private wells in Mass Massachusetts. So that's what Sherborne was a part of. Representatives from the DEP and UMass met with members of our Board of Health and some of us on the groundwater committee eighteen months ago. They sent out postcards to about two hundred homes in Sherborne, kind of a smattering by geography and also by expected potential hotspots in town. And the long and the short of it is you see the results here. The the state maximum contaminant level for public water supplies for a combination of six PFAS chemicals, you've heard of it, the PFAS six, happens to be twenty parts per trillion. A part per trillion, to follow my analogy, is not a drop of water in an Olympic swimming pool. It's a thousandfold more dilute. So it's a drop of water in a thousand Olympic swimming pools. And statewide preliminary results, the reports due out any soon. And I've been told that for the last three months, but it's due out any soon. Anytime soon statewide, almost seventeen hundred wells were tested and they're running about five percent over the twenty part per trillion. And we came in for this very small sampling cohort at this fifteen percent, which I think is a little concerning, but is what it is. And I think it's again due to our our older housing stock. But we had a fair number on the very low side. And finally, I want to mention on the PFAS and the select board have seen a slide similar to this a couple of months ago in the Board of Health. So far, thirteen of fourteen town owned and privately owned public water supply wells, that's wells that are regulated by the Mass DEP are starting to report PFAS six levels. And so far, four of the wells have come in over twenty. Seven have come in under twenty but above ten. And one is, one is no detect under two and one is under ten. That happens to be the final well. And the 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 unfortunate news and the town is is working on this. I don't know if our the DPW director Sean Kline's on hard at work at looking at the treatment strategies. But our town center well, which which serves the building that the the town staff is in the town hall, the police station, the the library and across the street, our community center that you talked about earlier in the evening is right up against the the MCL and has actually exceeded the MCL twice in the last several months. So that is a concern. So that is, I believe, yep, that is the topics I wanted to bring you up to date on. We're continuing to work on these and several other projects, including that well mapping project. But I think I'd like to stop there and answer any of your questions.
There I got one. Jeff?
Yeah. Would you unshare? There you go. Thank you. Yes, Paul. Go ahead.
So back in the day when I was on the groundwater protection committee years ago, we wrote this bylaw. And one of the things I was hoping that you would do would be to take a look at the town's groundwater protection bylaw and see if that needed to be updated or or modernized in any way. We we have begun looking at that, Paul. And I think we've struggled a little with it. We've we've looked at it. We've also, you know, certainly researched comparable towns. And everybody does things so differently. It is on our our list of things to continue to 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 work on. But we've we've kind of kind of been distracted by some of these other projects. But I totally agree with you. And it's kind of difficult. You know, how do you regulate you? We we one one challenge, a lot of these regulations, you try to regulate wells, but there's actually more regulations on septic systems and wells. And I think that's why you you probably need some stronger bylaws in a town a town like ours to better protect wells. So I agree, that's important.
Marion?
Right. I think Tom probably expects this from from me because we've talked about it before, but I want to mention it here. One of the values of having these well data that your indoor and is collected. And hopefully, another good intern will come along and you'll be able to continue to access those data will be to be able to see a three D picture of how deep the particular wells go. You know, with three D imaging, you can have a a block of earth rotate in front of your eyes and see exactly which wells go to which level in the ground. And you know, there's tremendous variation in the depth of wells. So when we have more data, it'll be really interesting to see if, for example, certain contaminants tend to occur at in wells that are like a hundred feet deep or seven hundred feet deep. Or, you know, it might help us to understand what's down there in the ground that we're drawing.
Well, we do. We definitely from the very beginning when we started bouncing this idea around, even before we asked for the funding. And we we let in mind, you know, once we got sufficient amount of of data. I have good news on the intern front. We just got a couple of very good applications. We struggled as Rebecca was leaving in August because we weren't getting applications. We've got it posted at about fifteen different schools. And I've talked to both by email and over the phone with no known GIS mapping people at different schools. So we're on their radar and we're starting to get applications. I'm there's a good chance we might have somebody before the for the end of year holidays bothering the Board of Health staff again, who've been invaluable, by the way, the the Board of Health staff in getting access to their records. And so I think that that'll get going strong again.
And and Tom, I think the the select board, we are the ones that appointed the groundwater protection committee members. And it's really a good group. So that's partly why we asked you for an update to the select board. But I'd like to ask the select board, you know, this is a moving target and really important for the town. I think we should have updates from groundwater protection once a year, the minimum. Would you agree?
Absolutely. Yes.
Well, I guess what I would say is it's equally important reaching out to the community because a lot of what they're doing is educating homeowners that may not be testing their well or, you know, they don't necessarily have to have it done as part of the state program. They could just be advised to test their own well because people are concerned if they test and find contaminants that could affect their property value. So they but they can independently have testing done. So I think a huge part of this is the education that Tom and his team in the Board of Health are providing in outreach to residents in town to make them aware of the challenges that we face.
We're definitely trying to do that. And I meant to mention, you know, just in case people are curious. You really should be testing your well, you know, every three years, five, five years, ten years, something after any any major, you know, change in your property also. And and the the simple Rcap testing that you saw there, that's probably about a two hundred dollar battery of tests. If you added volatile organics, I recently did that in my house. It came in everything, maybe three hundred and fifty, the the simple tests and the volatiles. PFAS expensive, you're probably looking at anywhere. They typical take charge you for two two samples, one a blank, since the levels are so low, you don't want the trip blank to show anything. So you're looking at like two or three, two, three or four hundred dollar sample, so eight hundred dollars. So a thousand dollars, you'd probably catch just about everything.
So can I just follow up on what Jeff Jeff said? I got asked in connection with a different issue. But we were talking about testing some wells and someone asked me if they hired their own testing service and they came and they found a problem was, is that testing service a mandatory reporter to the government, some government agency?
My understanding
is it truly private?
My understanding is it is private. That's my understanding. And I don't know if there's somebody on the Board of Health here, or it's my understanding that it is private. And just so you know, the Rcap study, the data was completely anonymous. They sent the summary to us in the Board of Health, but we know have no names, no addresses. The Mass DEP PFAS, the Mass DEP has the name and address, and so does our Board of Health. But that that's the extent. And they're in the results.
So the property owner was concerned that he have a well tested, there'd be adverse report, then he'd come home and there'd be this condemnation of his house and he had to go live in a hotel and all this kind of stuff. So you're you're saying that can't that can't
I I will research that, but I I thought I mean, I just had a testing done. I didn't have PFAS done and everything was reported just to me. It wasn't reported to the Board of Health. And I I think it's you know, testing requirements for private wells vary by, and there's three hundred fifty one, you know, towns in in Massachusetts. So some Board of Health's require testing at property. Our town does not. So it can can be complicated. I see Eric's got his hand up. I wonder if he might know the answer.
It depends actually who you hire to do it. If it's just a lab, I don't think they have any obligatory testing requirements. However, if there's if you hire an LSP and LSP is involved with that, they're they actually are legally required to report any any detection above an MCL and a private drinking water well within twenty four hours. That's outside of the two and seventy two and hundred and twenty day reporting requirements otherwise done, you know, that's obligated for the owner. But actually, an LSP for their license is required to report a hit above an MCL in a drinking water well within twenty four hours to the state.
Thank you. I'm hoping that people are listening. The guy who asked me the question is listening to what you had to say. That's very good. Thank you.
You only have twenty seven here, Paul, but hopefully watch it later. Okay, Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, we appreciate it. Okay, Marion, do you want to take the lead on, as I think everyone knows, we are looking at sort of two forty B projects on the Greenwood and Washington Street. It's been split into one that's four houses and subsequently an apartment, a forty unit apartment complex. And we have to respond to the four homes by December third is the date when our response is, we asked for an extension and December third is our due date. And the other part of the project is all one property. The tour is going to be on Monday, this coming Monday, the twenty first. Is it one P M? I think, Marion, I forget the time.
Yes, it's it's one P M.
P M. So Marion has drafted a letter encompassing all the comments we've gotten today just on the four, the four houses on Greenwood Street.
Just just to be careful, Jeff, when you say the tour, that's not an open to the public tour. That's for public. So just make sure people don't all show up thinking they can
Yeah, that's a good point.
Just like walk as prescribed under the forty B process.
Yep. So anyway, that's where we stand. We've got a draft letter that Marion put together. I gave her some comments this morning. We're still waiting for the Board of Health. They had they met last night, but they haven't provided their input yet. So why you you can explain way better than I can, Marion.
Right. I did send the draft letter. Uh right, uh I did send the draft letter out to the board and since then, I've made a few more. Corrections and typos and, you know, minor improvements. I could share my screen and show the letter or or shall I?
Round it up now, we can see it now, Marion.
Okay, I did share my screen, yeah.
Yeah.
Talked again, okay.
Maybe just at a high level and they could read it afterwards, is that what you're thinking?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um this letter is relatively short as these letters go. It's just for an overview of where we stand in housing in Sherburne, why housing is. Why density is limited, uh a little bit about our bedrock and all that, which we always refer to. Um then I uh summarize the bylaw changes and reports. And goals that we've set and summarize our progress. Toward uh our ten percent affordable housing state goal. To reach ten percent, according to the twenty twenty census, we need a hundred and fifty six total. Uh affordable units, that is units that are affordable to someone with an income. Of eighty percent or less of the median income of the region. Uh so far, we have forty eight for sure and uh perhaps fifty six. If the uh units currently underway get built, that means we're. About a third of the way toward that ten percent goal. So then I summarize the uh the affordable, the forty B affordable housing. Projects that are current in Sherburne. In addition to the Coolidge Crossing, a project which is still on hold. Um we have four other forty Bs, two of which are from the same developer, so I just quickly summarize those. Um the project seems to be eligible, I uh. Summarize the site and the uh the density considerations. There really are no really specific. Uh concerns that the town can hang a hat on at this point, it's four houses. On approximately just under one acre lots on Greenwood Street. And you've all seen the plan, it's on the website. Um we're waiting for Board of Health comments, uh but other than that, uh there there really are no. There there are no significant comments about this, the main point that I make in the end is that the citizen comments. And uh the board's overall view of this development will really be. Um can considered in the light of the fact that there are two developments on this, two forty Bs on this eighteen acres. One is the four houses we're looking at now, the other is a forty unit apartment building, so. The forty unit apartment building is called Sherburne Homes. And we will be um reviewing that really, starting now, all the information on it, it's already on the town website. We don't know when the deadline is for the town to get comments back to uh D H C. Division of Housing and Community Development, uh so we'll wait and see, but it'll probably be sometime in January. So that's basically uh the letter and uh there were some typos found, I fixed those. And um I think it probably is okay, I. It with all the typos fixed, I'll send it out to you again and you can take a look at it at your leisure. We will do the final approval in two weeks at our December first meeting. And then send it out right away.
Thanks, Marion.
Jeff?
Yep, you can unshare now, probably, Marion. Yes, Paul, go ahead.
So typically, I I see these letters as as a council, as you know, I serve as town council. And the typical letter I see is uh. One that objects to a a proposed project. This this letter doesn't really object to the project, so I'm wondering. It's it it's different, it's outside the usual uh kind of letter, if. If we're okay with the project, we don't need to to submit a letter at all. You're not required to submit a letter, but that leads me to the second point, which is that even if they're determined. To be eligible for this particular project, they don't have to build it. And where you've got two forty Bs that cover the same. Property, I I've seen situations where people go with different alternatives and I see. What the reaction is and then make a decision, a business decision later on as to what they're are actually going to do. So to the extent that. I guess the reason behind the letter is we're kind of signifying that we want them to go. With this forty B and not with the other forty B is is that sort of the overall? Reasoning behind the letter?
Well, the reasoning is that we're invited to comment and uh. One of the comments in the letter is that this is one of two forty Bs on the same property. The other is not going to mass housing, it's just going to D H C D, it's a forty B. But it's not going to the su- same subsidizing agency, because it's actually more affordable than the usual forty B. It's a workforce housing, so, I mean, the only point, well, I should first say that. If we're going to object, we have to have a reason to object and taking this project alone. Uh none of the boards and committees that weighed in could find a reason to object. But I thought it was an opportunity to signal to mass housing that there is another forty B that they may not have seen. On that same property and that when we evaluate the uh that. In evaluating the other forty B, we're going to be evaluating the entire, the entire water and septic situation. On the whole eighteen acres. So I did make that point in the letter and I thought it was worth writing the letter just to make sure they understood that. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I I I just want to make. Know my concern about the apartment building aspect of this, which is the other forty B. And want to see. The concerns about that bigger project. Reflected somewhere.
Well, we will be writing another letter, I say we, I hope it's we and not me. But uh we'll we'll have to uh write another letter in response to the uh the apartment complex. And we don't know what that deadline is, we I it would be addressed to uh. D H C D Housing and and Community Development, not to mass housing. So I think that's where we're going to have to uh really uh dig in and express significant concerns.
I I think the thing here, Paul, though, is letting them know that otherwise they wouldn't know that there's another project on the same property. And the other project is to be large enough that it's highly likely it's a public water supply to supply a forty unit apartment building, so it's going to be a. Much bigger draw on the aquifer, so I think part of the reason for the letter is to link the two because there. You wouldn't have to link them if they're both going to mass housing, but the uh apartment goes to a different entity in Massachusetts, I guess. So we're letting mass housing know that this isn't a standalone project, I think is the biggest thing.
If I can just chime in, I just think the tone of the letter is appropriate, I fully agree, we should actually let them know that this, you know, uh entire project going on is eighteen acres. As a holistic view, would like to take of this, and certainly I think there's a very little pushback to put on this, this has to be the closest forty B, the closest proposal. To Sherburne's inherent zoning I've ever seen, individual property ownership, individual homes, all done on close to an acre on each parcel, I mean. I don't think, you know, any group can say anything, you know, uh negative about that, to be honest with you, and I think it's um, you know, has its stance alone. You know, it's it's a it's a reasonable proposal and I think, you know, not having anything negative about that's reasonable, we are also a clearinghouse for the other boards. And Paul said we don't have to submit something, but I think we're obligated to at least forward the comments from the other boards. You know, if they're if they're gonna go take the time and draft something, I think we have to put some kind of cover letter on that. And as Marion said, I think it's very important that we actually identify that this is like one of a larger piece. And I I I agree with the tone and the text of the letter, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thanks. Another uh purpose of the letter is always to remind mass housing again. Of uh how hard we're actually trying to uh reach our affordable housing goals. And what the challenges are in Sherburne.
I agree with Eric, I think I think the tone and and the letter is well written, I think I think it makes a lot of sense to do this, so. Very good, thank you, Marion, for your hard work on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Paul, certainly if you have input, you can obviously contribute that to the letter also. wording that could be strengthened or included.
Absolutely.
Best thing to oppose the project, I'm thinking if we, if we like this project and we want this instead of. The other project.
Then it's not an either or.
We can't, we.
Not in the cards.
We should, we should say that we uh don't oppose this project, I I I I I'm not opposed.
Oh, it's not, Paul, it's not an either or, it's, he wants to do both. It's not like he's gonna do this or that, he's gonna do both is what he wants to do. On two different parts of the site.
Yes. And part of it, the reason he's doing it, cause I talked to him, is that uh it allows if he sells the houses. He can make of the apartment complex, some high percentage is going to be sixty percent of the income level, so he's trying to make the apartment complex. Truly really affordable, not the eighty percent cutoff, but the sixty percent, so if he makes a little bit more on the houses, he can then. Subsidize the apartment complex, not not that that's the right word, but that's part part of the reason for the houses to. Generate some uh value that can be um spread over the two.
Yeah, the other proposal is quite different, like I said, it's sixty percent, it's actually, it's not, it's not twenty five percent affordable to make it a a hundred, it's actually a hundred percent affordable. Like it's a real hundred percent.
Yeah.
And it's and it's uh some type of um tax relief from that as well, so I think there's there's reasons for him to actually make its separate proposals as well.
Yeah, but George stated it well, it's uh exactly as George described. All right, thank you.
So do you want me to, do we need a vote, Marion, that we're that we want this letter, like approve this letter as it is, or we just kind of?
Well, you know, we probably, it's not due until after our next meeting, I'm waiting for our.
Why don't we wait for the Board of Health to add their comments and then we'll vote on it the next time?
No, that's the plan.
Given their meeting, Board of Health's meeting last night, I don't think they'll have significant comments, but uh I have to wait and see what they say.
Okay.
Yep.
But if you like, I mean, we could approve.
No, there's no reason to vote yet, I was thinking, I didn't look at the calendar to see that we had another meeting between now, so it makes sense.
Yep, we're good. All right, thank you, Marion, for putting it all together, though, so uh the only thing we have left is routine business, or I have a select board report, but does anyone else? So uh have they want to start with?
I just want to make one quick thing, I just want to congratulate all the Dover Sherburne varsity sports teams this year, our. Girls field hockey team made it to the final four, our girls soccer team made it to the final four. Boys soccer made it to the final eight and the football team's still playing, they have their final four game on Friday night, so it's.
They're undefeated.
Yeah, they're undefeated, it's better.
I can't, I've been here twenty eight years, I don't ever have ever undefeated football team.
They beat the number one seed on Friday in Hudson, so they're.
Yeah, they beat Wat- Water.
Valley on Saturday, it's on Saturday at Weston High School.
Yeah. So.
But an impressive fall season at Dover Sherburne.
And for a small school, it's amazing.
Crazy, so um is there any other select board reports?
Just a a reminder that I will not be at the next meeting of the board. Not because I don't want to be there, but I have a special town meeting.
Yep.
If I didn't have another commitment in another town, I would want to be there.
We'll be assigning you lots of things, though, don't worry.
You get to write the next letter.
So we have a a major select board uh report uh for me and Eric and um I've asked Brian Collin to be here, we this week. Um learned of a legal challenge to our opening the library, there's a firm called um Beacon Consulting. What's it, Beacon Construction Company, B C C, it's confused because our architect, our architect is Beacon Architectural Associates, B A A. But it's B C C is the construction company that was hired by travelers to sort of lead as a uh. A general contractor and they're still using five star to do a lot of the work. So um they have filed a legal challenge to us being allowed to open on time, we were originally going to have a ribbon cutting on December eighteenth. And that's on hold right now and we're um working with our town council, Rick Holland, to. Understand if this legal challenge is even legitimate and how we can respond, so. While this is a select board report, I'm, Eric and I both have been briefed on it, but. Uh Brian's much more knowledgeable, so I wondered if the board would be okay if Brian gives us a little bit more details about it. Um because we felt that it was important for the select board to be aware of what was going on and um. Not get blindsided by someone in the community. Is that all right with the?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, could could I, could we have a copy, could you send the copy to the Board of their demand, whatever they file?
I don't have it myself yet, but I'm sure we can do that afterwards, Paul. So Brian, and and so this came up uh in town this week and it was coincidental, this week was the library trustees meeting on. Seven thirty Tuesday night, so that's where it was first discussed, so um Brian, um can you uh correct everything I misstated? And and advise us?
No, you did pretty well for hearing about it uh third handed about a minute and a half, so. Uh and we, I will send um the select board the letter, so our intention was to start moving furniture. Into the completed part of the building actually today. Uh and we got the letter from Beacon Consulting Group, which is again the project manager for the Surety Travelers. Uh objecting to that, now, our contract says that we can occupy and install uh materials. And completed areas of the building before substantial completion, as long as it doesn't interfere with the completion of the work. Beacon Consulting Group feels that having uh furnishing starting to move into the completed side of the parts of the building. Would disrupt the completion of their work, um so that's what the the primary objection is to that, and they also. You know, are saying they wouldn't be responsible for any additional time or costs to complete their work if we moved. Furnishers into the completed areas of the building and they wouldn't be responsible for any uh damage to those furnishings that may occur. As they were trying to complete their work, and then they also referenced something that's related to the litigation that I can't talk about in this session. But as another objection, so as Jeff mentioned, uh so uh we got the letter on Tuesday. We had the library trustees meeting that night, um we had, you know, penciled in December eighteenth as the opening. But also had said we needed a go no-go decision by November twenty first to be able to get invitations out and prepare and such. And based on this information, we uh the trustees voted on a no-go for December eighteenth because of the uncertainty around uh. This and delays and start beginning the move-in process, so and what that does is, when you think of the calendar. Is we discussed, you know, doing a grand opening ribbon cutting sometime in the second half of January, early February, just because of the holidays. And then school vacation, we will open the library once everything's moved in, we're um we're not waiting for a grand opening to have the library be open. So if we can get in there and start functioning, um you know, before mid-January and and our aspiration would be to do that. We will do what we call a soft opening uh for that, but we didn't want to do a ribbon cutting if the building's not complete, so. And again, as as Jeff mentioned, uh I, you know, Sean, Colleen, myself and and Jim called puddled on this yesterday. We've got another meeting on Tuesday with our architect, Beacon Architectural, and just try to, you know. Sketch out what the work plan is to be able to uh get everything done. And then also challenge the their proposition that. Having us moving furnishings in there would inhibit their work.
Did they give any actual grounds like how it inhibit the work or just said it will?
Yeah, they just said it will.
Because they have very little work left. I mean, the carpet's now 100% installed. I think they're still working on that one skylight as far as I know.
Yeah, yep.
Then it's just punch list items. So it's not like there's a scope of work that's not complete, but the fine.
Yeah, the one, the, the one major defect that there's, we still need them to complete is the skylights and the leaking in the skylights. But, but Eric, they did not specify what would, what work would be inhibited, just that it would be.
Has our OPM or architect asked them? If it doesn't seem common sense, if it's, it's unoccupied parts of the building, I mean, can we at least challenge it? Just ask?
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, we are challenging it and, and the, the weekly meeting is Wednesday at 1 o'clock. I don't attend those. But it may have been discussed then because this, you know, this letter had come in on Tuesday morning.
So we just wanted to make sure the select board was aware and, you know, Sean's obviously very involved in this and as is Rick Holland, our town council.
I, I have questions and theories I don't want to ask in an open session. I guess can we put an agenda item on December 1st in executive session on this?
Yep, yep. Yeah, it just came up, so I didn't modify the agenda. It just came up. I didn't even know if we would be able to announce it, but I felt that I didn't want the select board not to be aware. And also delays not only the ribbon cutting, but Elizabeth Johnson's retirement party was going to coincide with the, with the ribbon cutting. So her last day, I believe, is December 3rd, isn't that right?
December 2nd and we did vote in on Tuesday. Liz Anderson, who's the assistant director, will become the interim director on December 3rd. And we've got the job posted and taking applications and we'll probably close the. Application process in early January and then interview candidates.
We have a small search committee and Erin Carroll is a professional search consultant. So she's on the search committee. I don't remember who else, but.
Yeah, no, Erin's, Erin's doing a fantastic job on that. And the, and the reopening committee has actually accomplished a lot. So. We'll, if we can only get this building settled.
Okay, that's. All I wanted to add, but obviously a downer. So, but you know, it's another hurdle that we'll get over. So any other questions or? Issues? I don't have anything further for this evening.
Move to a chair.
Okay.
Second.
Marion?
Hi.
Thank you, Brian, by the way. George?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. And thank you Diane for helping us so much. We appreciate it.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night.